Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this. Welcome to the Otero County Commission meeting on Thursday, July 28, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Mark or?
Here.
Commissioner Madley?
Here.
He's sitting here, okay. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. Do I get a second?
I'll second him.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna move the second item up to first so that we can have Carolyn come in and talk to us about this.
Would she go? Can somebody step out?
I think she went to get her.
Good morning.
Good morning, Carolyn.
Carolyn Burrell, Correctional Services Director. I'm here to request more money, unfortunately, yes. The increases do not seem to be making a difference right now, and I'm hoping that if this, with a $5 increase for starting pay from a $15 to $20, that maybe we'll have some we'll be able to compete a little bit better with at least even the sheriff's office, because I know theirs is at 19 something. Because it seems like we're kind of even with everyone else around the area, and it doesn't seem to be making a difference as far as that, the $15. I don't know what to do.
We're currently paying what McDonald's pays.
Okay.
If somebody has a choice, I think they find it easier to flip a burger than do a thankless job at the jail.
Exactly.
Yeah. Did, y'all were gonna reach out to, to the governor, wasn't you, to?
RB is working on resolution and what you're doing with that.
Yeah, I'm working on a resolution, and I've spoken with Grace Phillips at New Mexico Counties to get her input, and the plan is to tidy up the resolution and then get it out to the other counties to see if any of the others want to join with us in the ask.
So if we, my big concern on this, Carolyn, if we don't get anybody on opening that other half, if you can't hardly if we're having a really hard time running the half of the building we are now, and we get ready to open up the full building, what are we gonna do? What's gonna happen?
I don't have, I don't have an idea.
And that's.
Because we can't move anybody out. Nobody will take them. Terrell Prison may take a few here and there. Hudson County may take maybe 10, but you're looking at, you know, over 200 people if you looked at total incarcerated. We have 171, I believe, this morning in-house. So, you know, we're just really, there's no place to put them. We have to try to do something. If not, then the only thing to do is then, I guess, county would have to reach out to other counties within the state to see if anybody would be willing to take inmates. How is inmate? I don't know. That's the only other solution that there is.
I would, I would maybe start reaching out to a few and just try to talk to them a little bit and say, hey, if this happens, can you take any, you know?
Well, I've seen emails come through from San Miguel County because of the fire that they had up there, and they were evacuating. And of course, you had Santa Fe that would take some, and you had another surrounding facility. But they can't take all of them. So you would end up having to spread these inmates all over the state if that was even possible. If that, if they'll even take them. And then you have bigger, then you have other issues. You have transports, you have courts that you have to think about, all of that. There's still a lot to it, and you couldn't close down your facility, because you'd still have to have it basically open. You'd have to have booking officers, you'd have to have working shifts, you still have to have officers, and certain areas still open in order for the arresting agencies to bring them in, you book them in, because you have to keep track of all of that still before then people would be transported to those housing facilities. I mean, I think that this would be, at least we could say we've tried, we've tried, we went higher to try to see if we can do it, but we're gonna have to advertise really, really everywhere, everything. I've seen where the cars on DPS and the back of them, they've got it advertised there. I've seen coming in from Las Cruces, the boards out there that they've got advertised. I think we need to do the same thing. We need to put it in the paper. I know nobody reads it and nobody sees it, but we have to show and put it everywhere in the surrounding community and outside, whether that be Las Cruces, Río Dozo, up in the mountains, everywhere, because if not, we're not gonna reach out enough.
Have you reached out on a nationwide? There's gotta be some way to publish that.
We do it on Indeed, which is nationwide.
Is it?
Yes.
It is on that?
Yes.
Okay.
And we are advertising the radio now, too. I hear the spots every morning coming around.
I mean, I've heard it on the radio, and I've seen it on the emails and stuff on the web and stuff like that, but we gotta get the people that out, because I don't think there's anybody who wants to work around here, I can tell you that.
No, I agree.
So.
She asked, do you have any?
If one day, I, I didn't feel, I didn't feel comfortable about any, any further increases. And maybe we can, we can table this, and unless, I guess, do we have to get it in today in order to finalize the budget as far as any increases that we we may approve?
We do need to finalize the budget today, meaning I need a signed resolution. However, you can choose to table that item. I can take this out of the budget. We can always add it back in later. Once the final budget is approved, that should happen the first week of September, so it would be about another, what, five, six weeks maybe from now? So at the September meeting, if you wanted to take this up again, we could potentially put that back in. Can't do any budget adjustments between now and the time the final budget is approved, but you can, that's why these three items are here. They're included in the budget, but you can choose to table them or, you know, not vote on them, and if you table it, I'll just take it out temporarily until.
I would, I would be in favor of tabling it until we can maybe brainstorm some more ideas and re-do that it doing. Maybe put it back on the, our next commission meeting agenda where we can, we can discuss it again.
And also the hazard pay and the recruitment bonuses incentives are gonna be starting as of August 1st. So that's next Monday. So that will help for the detention officers specifically, especially the hazard pay.
And we're, we're full on with inside the law as far as the commission goes, as far as increasing the hazard pay and these motions that we moved on the last meeting, really, we have, we have flexibility inside of the county to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Well, yeah, the other, I would, I would just, I would be in favor of just tabling this.
We can't wait. We are in critical condition. Otherwise, your sheriff is gonna have to come in and bring somebody into work, because we don't have people. We have one person today on the floor for the shift. The lieutenant's back there helping, because we just don't have people. They're calling in, they're coming down with COVID.
As Gerald said, too, Carolyn, you have to understand, there's only so much money in the county, and if we start making these big increases, how are we gonna meet our budgets next year and the following year, you know? So I, I think we need to write off into this very cautiously, and we would love to give everybody out there big bonuses and big raises and stuff, but to be completely honest with you, it doesn't seem like any of that's been helping to date anyway, you know? I mean, all it's gonna wind up doing is increasing the pay for those that are already there, and we're not, it's not stimulating the hiring process. We're not getting new, new people out there, so I don't know about a few dollars an hour raise is gonna be the, be the solution to our problem. I think we need to dig deeper into it and maybe reform some of the ways that we, we detente people, you know? I mean, again, I think our worker inmate programs need to be revitalized, and maybe this is the golden opportunity in order to do that. Maybe if we, we transform some of this where we don't have so many people sitting in jail, but we have them out in our national force cleaning our floors up, and we get those programs going again, then maybe we won't have to have so many people on top of your jail. I mean, there's always, there's always different solutions to problems, and I don't think that we found that solution yet. I don't think an increase in pay is going to be the thing that's gonna solve this problem. That's why I would move to table this and allow us to brainstorm some more ideas.
And let me just say one other thing. The only other technicality that I see is that by including this in the final budget, we really cannot or should not be spending anything approved in the final budget until DFA approves it that first week of September. Everything that was approved in the interim budget, we did receive an interim budget approval, so as of July 1st, all of those items, we could, we could start spending those. I don't know if there's a way around that. I did try calling our auditor yesterday for a similar situation, and they are currently doing fieldwork out of, they're out of the office this week. So I left a message for her to call me back, but she has not had a chance to get back with me yet. So I'm just afraid that we wouldn't, I would be afraid to spend this money before the final budget is approved, which should be the first week of September. They said no later than September 6th, and our next meeting is September 8th. Or the 9th. Is it 8th or 9th?
I think that's why.
Do you have any suggestions, Sheriff?
We, we had a meeting the other day, and we just kinda talked about.
I'm sorry, August, yes, but I'm talking about the budget.
We, things gotta come up.
Next week, you're right.
People will go to work at Hobby Lobby for 18 bucks an hour instead of, after 15 bucks an hour. So I don't know, I think the pay has got to come up. That's, it depends, it depends where and all that, but, you know, me and Tom, and these two girls here, Pam, we all sat down and talked about, we were basically talking about transport, which is going to be another problem coming up pretty soon. But we're kinda trying to hash out some, some way to help try to fix this. That was, that was our kind of, our first step in the whole process, is that pay, and we started at 1953. And they walk in the door, untrained, and we just greet, 1953. That's competitive. Again, I, I think that's where we need to start this.
Carolyn, the thing with, with the increase, too, that I see that a benefit is, maybe it'll help keep the people there, there, so that they don't leave. Because that's a problem, too. I mean, we want more people, but we definitely want to keep the people we already have. We have to give them incentive to stay.
Right.
Well, we can work the budget. It, it's gonna be all these toys that everybody, new graders, new loaders, new sheriff cars is gonna have to stop a little bit to account for the labor. So as long as everybody in the departments understand this, you gotta give from one to take from the other. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So all this stuff coming in, the, some of the new equipment, unless it's an absolute dire need, we're gonna have to back off on some of it to, to make that work.
What we have always learned in, in working in the jails is either you pay now or you pay later, but you will pay. Somehow, you're worrying now if you have one person on the floor and he gets hurt. County is liable.
I, I understand that.
And how are you gonna justify it?
The, the total amount for the year for these raises that's proposed is, is 212,000. Any lawsuit that we get from the liability is likely to far exceed that. If we have to transport them to other counties because we can't manage them, we have to pay those other counties for housing those inmates, and that cost, I don't know how much that would be, but I think it would go up. As far as the National Guard, any help, what I've seen from other states that have activated their guard, they've only put them in the control rooms. They are putting them out on the floor, and I would make the assumption that our governor and agent general already have reservations about doing it, so if they did send any help, I would think that they would probably only allow them to be in the control rooms. So that just frees us up to have a few more on the floor, but it's still, it would be a stopgap measure, but it's not a solution. So we can't count on that, but, you know, 212,000 for the year isn't, isn't too, too big, considering that.
But to be honest with you, the, the pay increase, can we really call that a solution? Is that really gonna fix our problem, you know? I mean, I just, I don't see it, I don't see it happening. I, I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe a, a few dollars an hour increase is gonna make everybody flood out there to the jail, to apply to be a jail guard, but I'm just, I don't see it myself, and I, I'm against it. And I believe it should be tabled until we can maybe brainstorm some more ideas. I don't think this is a, a decision that we're just bound to make today, as Julian just explained.
The main thing is, on the, Corey, is the time factor.
What factor, Carolyn, I'm sorry?
It, it's a time factor. That's, that's my big concern. I, I wouldn't mind with trying to figure some ideas, too, but on the time factor, my biggest fear is when this jail is, the other part is complete, we're gonna be in one big mess. I mean, we're almost in a big mess right now. And I don't know if this, and I don't know if this will work or not. I mean, I, I don't know.
All we can do is try.
And, and again, if I thought that this was gonna solve our problem, I would, I would be more apt and inclined to do it, but I just, I don't think a, a, a pay increase out there is gonna, you know, is gonna be the solution to the problem. I just don't. I think we need to dig deeper into it, and again, I think that, you know, maybe we need to have a reform on how we handle our inmates and, and how, you know, I mean, I don't know. I think there could be other solutions out there that we could, we could work out, but just not too soon.
Well, I think if we wait on the legislature to make any kind of reform, we're gonna be in big trouble.
You may end up with no one coming in on shift.
Exactly.
And then what do we do?
So Julian, do you feel like we need to vote on this today?
I mean, I just need to know whether or not you want to include this today or if you wanna table it. And if you choose to table it, I'll just pull that out when I submit the budget tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I think I'm in favor of including it, because I, I don't see any way around it. I mean, I see what Corey's saying, but so many of the, I mean, I'm not sure what other options we have. You know, we've gotta get some more people out there, and it does help to pay people more money. I mean, that's, that's definitely an incentive, especially when you work anywhere in town for 15, 18 bucks an hour and not have the risk that they have out there. So you have to give them a reason to want to, to go out there. So I, I think we should include it. But that's my two cents. I just, to depend on the legislature that we've got right now to make any significant changes, that's so far down the road that I'm afraid our jail will be shut down with the doors locked by the time that would happen. So I think we have to try what we can do right now that we can do to get some help out there. That, that's my two cents on that.
Well, I can tell you, I witnessed a little deal the other day of a contractor in town telling this 19-year-old kid, he said, I'll pay you 25 bucks an hour to come and go to work for me, and he didn't do it. You, you could keep going on this. I'm afraid you just keep going and going and going, and there's not gonna be no stopping on this.
I hear you. That, that's the problem today. I mean, employers, everybody's scratching, and, and, you know, I mean, I just, that's why I don't think this pay increase is gonna be the solution to, to our problem. I just really don't, but they get well.
But I, I feel we don't have the time to, there's gotta be something done. My feeling on this, and you're not gonna like what I'm gonna say, but if we can't get anybody to fill the deal, I'm almost ready to pull the plug on that deal out there because of the issues, the liability issues that's fixing to come on. And I'm not saying that meanly, but I'm saying it in a logical way, and, and we will catch grief because we spent so much money building this new jail, and then all of a sudden you close the doors on it. You still gotta have somebody in there to run it. That's the problem. You know, you don't wanna get any of your, your jailers hurt, or y'all hurt, or any of the inmates hurt. So somewhere, reality's gotta have to sit in on this deal. So I'm, I'm willing to try something, and if it doesn't work, then my next deal is gonna be stayed, shuttered down.
And I, and I would, I would agree with that, Gerald, and I, I hate to say it too, but at the same time, you know, there's a lot of people in our country today that are on house arrest, you know, and they have to stay inside of their homes. And who's to say that we can't move more that direction, where we put more people on house arrest? And then they're in their own houses instead of in our house, but what happened to that? And they would be probably better off, if they were, they would rather, I'm sure, be in their own house and be sitting in the jail cell. So I mean, of course, you have the violent felony offenders that you do have to bring out of society, but if it's the non-violent people that got picked up for a DUI or, or, or theft or something that, where we could contain them under house arrest, you know, maybe this would move us that direction. I don't know. I, I just, again, I feel like there's always solutions to problems that, that really need to be focused on, and a lot of times, just knowing many of some of those are gonna fix the problem.
If we ended up shutting down the jail completely, Sheriff, how would that work for people that had to be processed and stuff? Would you have to do that at the sheriff's office, or how would that work?
I'll be honest with you, I, I don't know the process.
Yeah.
I do not know. I would have to do some research and see.
I guess we could talk to other counties that don't have jails but do have law enforcement. I mean, they're, they must be booking them in the other facilities.
I've never, never experienced it, never really seen it, so I, I would have to investigate what I want to see.
Okay.
One other thing I just wanted to throw out real quick is looking at transports. If we had to send in Santa Fe and Hudson County, Cruzes, you know, Chaparral, wherever, you know, then we're still gonna have court. We're still gonna have transports, I gotta, you know, and, and I'm kinda trying to prepare for some of that, to try to help in with transports. But if, if we start farming these inmates out, our transports are just gonna go, and they've got, what, two transport officers now?
Two and a half.
Two and a half? I got, I got one, possibly two, if, you know, ever fourteen of them.
So if we farm somebody up, up to Farmington, or, you know, up in the northern part of the state or something, I mean, you're looking at three, four-hour drive to get them back down here.
Bring them to court, a lot of time.
Take them back.
Court, we gotta take them.
Can't they do them on the virtual courts?
We have been requesting that. About the only one that's really helped us out is Magister Court. The judge over there has been very good about taking in some audio, virtual, but starting to see that now the virtual are slowing down.
There's certain courts that you can do arraignment, you can do through video, but jury trials, sentencing, all of that, you have to do in person. So the other facility that is closed down, and they house them in demi, is the TRC. They still have an administrator there, and they have officers there because they still book them in. And then I believe that they have a transport team that then takes them to, to demi, and then I guess brings them as needed. So like, that's why I was saying, the facility would have to stay open for, still stay open and still have to be run. You still have to have your officers there. You just wouldn't be able to utilize the whole thing, which means you would still have to have maybe medical, because they would have to be cleared before you take them to another facility. You may have to even still have a kitchen, depending on how long it's determined that they need to be there before you transport them out to another facility. So you're not getting away from the expense. It may shorten, but you're still gonna have to have people there. You have to be able to track what inmates you have, who is incarcerated.
So let me ask you another, Carol, another question, Carolyn. Is there, are there companies out there they can contract out the jail to?
I don't know.
The same as what?
We can privatize, and they've looked at it before. When Tommy Harold was here as commissioner, he proposed that. We had some companies look at the facility. We had an outcry from the employees that didn't want it done, afraid of losing para, afraid of losing jobs, and it never came to fruition. RB and I have talked about it. I don't know right now in the needle of construction if anybody would be interested in not seeing the full finished product, if they'd be willing to take it on. But yes, there are private companies that would run it for us.
But we're only just a few months away from being done with that.
September, yeah.
Hopefully. I mean, I would think the paperwork process of getting that advertised and getting it, I mean, they should be able to see close enough to the finished product.
We could, I could put something on the agenda for this month's meeting, or August, asking your approval to go out to bid.
I'm sure a pri, a pri, to privatize that, though, and have a private company come in, they're still gonna be bound by all the same regulations that we're bound by, but they're gonna have private employees, and it's gonna probably be twice, twice as expensive as, as us running it, you know? I mean, I, I don't know. I, I don't think the pri, privatizing is gonna be more expensive.
It's just taking the privatization, it will take the liability off.
But the home, you know, the home confinement, you know, for non-violent criminals that are sitting out there right now on possession charges or, or DUIs and stuff, you know, to have them, have them home containment with GPS monitored on them that tells if they've left their house or not, maybe we could, maybe we could unload a bunch of the inmates that right now are in our care, and then in, in turn, that would put a relief on Carolyn and her staff as far as managing and keep the violent offenders and the the people that are a threat or a danger to society by them being out, keep them contained. But those that are, you know, put them in home containment, make them work during the day, and again, reinstit, reinstitute our worker inmate programs and, and have them out working up in the mountains every day. I mean, I, I think that would be a solu, maybe a start to a solution. But one thing's for certain, I believe, is that our whole penal system needs reform, and maybe we could start that reform here in our county. If we don't have the money to pay the staff to man our jail, maybe we could, maybe we could do something better.
The current budget for the detention center for fiscal year '23 is $7.7 million. So I'm not sure if we privatized it, how, how much that would cost the county annually? Would it cost us $7.7 million? I don't know.
How much do we pay MTC for, how much do we pay MTC for Chaparral?
That, that's, that's a different situation because of the way that's, the bonds are with that. I mean, it's, yeah.
And they pay us, right?
Yeah, yeah. Exactly.
Have remit due off of that.
If, if we put it out to bid. If we put it out to bid, we don't have to accept it.
No, you can just get pricing.
At least we'd know what was available if we did that. Who determines if they go home on an ankle bracelet? Is that the judge?
Yeah, that would, you know, two judicials.
How many inmates do you have that would be in that situation where you could do that? Ten percent, twenty percent, fifty percent?
No, I would say fifty percent. I'd say lot less. But it depends on the courts. You're going to have the DA that has to, you know, DA, and then your attorney, and then the judge.
Okay, so if you had a hundred and seventy in there, even if it was twenty-five percent, I mean, you're down around forty to forty-five people, right?
But the thing is that the duties aren't stopping. Just because you move out ten percent of them, or twenty or thirty percent of them, you still have to go and feed them. You still have to go and do medications. You still have to give them cleaning supplies. You still have to move out the ones that are there for visitation. So that hasn't changed any of the duties. The duties are still there. It's just that the population has decreased a little bit. But you still have fifteens walking in the back door, so you could move, I could move fifty people out. Let's say that OP would take them. But if you have DPS, sheriff's office, day police still bringing them in the other door, all you're doing is, you know, and the idea that we're expanding is they think we have more beds when we really are not having more beds. So, but they'll fill it up before you know it, and then those fifty will have to stay out because we won't have any room for them because they'll start filling them up. That's what I've said in all of my, you know, in my reports, is that the increase, they're bringing them in, they're bringing them in, and they're not letting them out fast enough. They're not going to court fast enough. And now we have them sitting there, and we can't move them out to prison because we don't have a transport team. We have two females, well, actually, three females in transport. One's in booking. She's assuming the booking sergeant's duties and is doing it with courts. And then the other two are doing courts in-house, on the laptops. So if it requires one of them to go out, that leaves one person on transport to be able to do all the courts in-house. So it's a good idea to try to move some of them out. That's great, because that's what we try to do, keep them out so that the population stays low, because we don't know what's going to come in the next minute from the arresting agencies. So we do need people because you just can't do, you can't do it with two people on the floor, and you definitely can't do it with one person on the floor. My lieutenant and my deputy director worked Tuesday night, and they may end up working tomorrow night because there's only going to be no one on the floor. If those three people show up and are in boxes, the other two are out because of COVID. So they're going into work.
So it's definitely more of a staffing issue than a population issue. I mean, you're.
They're always there and there, right there. If it's not one, it's the other, you know? And most of the people that have left are going to jobs that are Monday through Friday, eight to five, don't work weekends, don't work shifts. That's why they're leaving, you know? And then you can get, I had two that just left to the high school. They're getting eighteen-something. And they don't have to work weekends, holidays, shifts. What would you put?
I'd rather stay out there than have to deal with them kids.
Well, that's what I would say, but that's not the way they see it. Because they're having to deal with the inmates in the back, and this generation has changed. The inmate population, they're, I don't know what I want to say, you know? They're, it's not the way it used to be before. They were more respectful. They're not respectful anymore. They don't care. These days, they don't care. And so officers are taking the abuse. Our vendors are taking the abuse.
Well, I feel we need to do something. We can't, I don't think we can sit. I don't know that this is the fix, but we've got to figure out something because we can't keep going.
I know, I know.
The liability is what I'm worried about. That thing was a liability money pit before, and it's going to turn into be a brand-new building with liabilities all over again.
I think of that every minute of the day, even after hours, because I just don't know what's going to come, what's going to happen.
I would like to see what it would cost to go contract it.
We can find out.
Just out of curiosity, maybe it costs more than what it cost us, or maybe it costs half of what it cost us.
Maybe nobody responds. We don't know.
Yeah.
But then it would be on them to staff it. Wouldn't be on us.
And they most likely, from what I understand from the private facilities, do pay better. But I've not witnessed it, experienced it, but that's what I've been told by other counties that have privatized.
Lincoln County's private.
Who is?
Lincoln County.
Should they have a good situation?
I don't know.
No comment on that one?
They're advertising for employee.
Yes, they're advertising here for employees.
Are they?
Yeah. So if that doesn't tell you.
I think it's eighteen an hour.
So maybe we could keep some of the people that go to work there here and work here if we gave them more. I don't know. I mean, I don't know what the solution is either, you know? Otherwise, I would have tried that.
The problem is, if you give them this nineteen, whatever it is that you want to do.
The twenty?
Yeah, the twenty. You can't come back in six months, say, "Well, that didn't work. I'm taking it away from you." What do you think's going to happen then?
I don't know.
You're going to be sitting there looking, "Where'd everybody go?" Well. What's your suggestion, RB?
I think it goes back to the fact that you can work at McDonald's for fifteen, the same they're getting here. There is a pay issue. And a lot of people use these jobs for stepping stones to law enforcement. But they might be willing, and they can make more at the sheriff's office, but they might be willing to stay longer if they're getting paid the same.
Well, we can try it.
And I know it'll be more expensive if we have lawsuit or if we have to farm them out to other counties. Then we'll be looking at a lot more money.
Well, I mean, like I say, on the budget, on our yearly budget, here's $202,000. That is going to have to come back. So as long as everybody understands what we're trying to do here, they're going to have to, not just your department, but his department, the road department, everybody's going to have to pitch in here and try to take a little of this off of us. So, I mean, do you see any other way?
Not really. I mean, I do not. I feel like we have to do something because it's not getting any better, just being stagnant and having that big old building out there. I mean, I hate the thought of closing that down with the money that we spent getting it where it's at, and then what do you do with it? You know, if it's not a jail, I mean, it's a jail. So then it's just a big old empty building, which would be really sad. Plus, we'd lose all the employees, county employees, so. I mean, I feel like this is the best solution for now, is to offer them more money, to try to get the people to stay that are there, and then encourage people to maybe sign on to work out there. Because that's a tough place to work, you know? And if you can work at other places and make a lot more money, I don't know why anybody would want to do that, so. Got to give them some kind of incentive to want to do it.
This is your entry level, right?
Yes, it would go from fifteen to twenty.
So how many officers, how many, how many do you have that would be making the twenty bucks an hour that's working there now? So if this is your entry level, you see.
We have to bring the current employees up as well, or else you have entry coming at a higher level than current. So the current employees will go up as well as new hires.
So that $202,000 has got that incorporated in it?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Because I thought, man, you're going to lose more right there if you bring the new hires in, more money than the guy working there.
Right. Oh, yeah, that'll really, you'll have more letters of resignation, or I'll have more letters of resignation.
All right.
All right. Any more discussion? Okay, on item number two, I make a motion for the approval of resolution number zero seven dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two slash one-one-one dash zero-one, fiscal year 2022, 2023, final budget adoption.
Before you finish that, there are two other items that need to be discussed.
We've got two more on there.
Can't leave that. I think you're done. Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, so the other one was the funding.
The other items, I know that you had, we'd already sort of spoken about the Flickinger, but hadn't made a decision to completely, or to add it to the final budget. So that is what item number one is. That's $71,024 for remodeling and soundproofing the bathrooms at the Flickinger Center. This would not be a community services agreement. This would actually just go into buildings and grounds budget as part of their capital outlay.
Okay. All right. I've got no problem with that.
Nope.
That'll be done.
And then item number two was to add a new hire at paralegal for the county attorney at a rate of 26.4423 per hour or $55,000 annually. It would be a range, but that would be the top of the range, plus benefits. And that includes all the taxes and full health insurance. So the total cost would be $83,101.95. That includes the benefits.
Okay. We need to get you some help.
It'd be helpful.
Yes.
All right. Now you can do your deal.
Okay. All right, so now we're ready. All right. I make a motion to approve resolution number zero seven dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two slash one-one-one slash zero-one, fiscal year 2022, 2023, final budget adoption, one-one-one, eleventh fiscal year. Can I get a second?
All second.
All in favor? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, so now we're going to go on to item number one. Do you want to kind of give us a rundown?
Sure. This is, each quarter, we have to submit a financial report to the Department of Finance Administration that basically shows our budget to actuals. It's all the actual expenses each quarter. So on the agenda item, there are some attachments that you may or may not have actually received. The first one is the recap, and the recap, like I said, this is something that is, it's in the format of, it's the DFA reports that come from their system. So it's using the DFA fund numbers. So the recap, that report shows, it's the year-to-date actual revenues, expenditures, and transfers for each fund. And then there is a summary report, and this shows the year-to-date summary of the budget and actual activity for each major category of revenue and expense within each fund. This is how DFA does their reports. The detailed report shows each individual line item, the activity of the budget and the actuals. And then the transfers would be transfers in between departments. So for example, we have quite a few funds that are not able to, or departments that are not able to sustain themselves on the revenue that they receive. So the general fund transfers additional revenue to that fund so that they can have a balanced budget. So for example, like the Detention Center, the Road Fund, all the community services, it's a transfer to cover all of those expenses, the HIDA, the Convenience Center, those are the types of funds that receive those transfers. So that report shows the total amount of the transfers that have been done throughout the entire year, because this is quarter four. The last attachment is a crosswalk of the funds that explains which of our funds are contained within the DFA funds. And so one thing I was mentioning with Sylvia this morning is I don't normally do a county recap like I do for the budget. There is a county recap that looks like this, that has all of our, it has all of our funds on there, in addition to the DFA fund. There's a separate recap that's just the DFA funds. But I will start doing that for the quarterly reports. It's just going to be a slightly different process for me to put it together because budget is an estimate. Actuals are actuals I have to pull from some different columns, basically, on their boards to put that together for you, but I will start doing that going forward. So this is, this is an item that typically is on the consent agenda each quarter. The only quarter that DFA requires a resolution is the fourth quarter. So that's why we have this here today, that we need the resolution signed. It needs to be submitted by July 31st. And the other thing I was going to mention is the ending cash on that recap, that final column that says adjusted balance, that is the beginning cash for this fiscal year, for fiscal year 2023.
On your item, $25,000 forest reserve, what is that?
On the three hundred, or the $3,224, is that what you're asking? Or the forest?
What is, what is the forest?
Oh, the forest reserve. So that is actually, that forest reserve fund is money that we get. It comes through the federal government. It's used mostly by, I think, the emergency services department and the road fund. Both get a little portion of that, and that is for like the FireWise program that we have up there. There's a couple of different things they can use that money for. It's a fairly small budget. So their budget's about $50,000 a year, and we don't even usually spend that much.
When Tom works the forest roads, does that money come out of there?
I believe so, yeah. Because part of it goes to the road department to, I guess, for maintaining some of the forest roads. And then the rest of it goes to the general fund, essentially for emergency services. And they're the ones who have that, I believe it's called the FireWise contract. And actually, Matt could probably speak more to that, but I know he's out this week.
It's the one you fund South Central Mountain Resources.
Excuse me?
It's the one you fund the South Central Mountain Resources. They come every year in percentage when you do the public hearing. That's part of that.
Okay, we've got items one through five here, and this is labeled out, one through nineteen. What is six and seven and all that belong to?
I think she just used it to separate. Are you talking about the tabs? I think she just used them to separate the different reports. I think, I don't think the numbers actually have anything to do with it. I think she just used them to separate all of the reports.
Okay.
I know it would be helpful if our financial system had a, like a financial report module. It doesn't. So anything that I would create for financial reports that shows all of our individual funds would have to be done manually. Doesn't mean that that couldn't be done. I've never attempted that before, but could potentially work on something like that. I'll at least start getting a recap that shows all of our county funds so you can see that and see how it's aggregated into the DFA funds. That might be helpful, so I'll start doing that.
What is the DFA fund? What does that mean? What does DFA stand for?
So DFA has different fund numbers than what we. So DFA has different fund numbers than what we have. And some of their funds, like for example, all of our volunteer fire departments, on the county side, each one of them has their own fund number. If you look on, I think you should have this larger recap for the budget. This is the one that I put together that has all of our county individual funds.
I haven't run across that paper yet.
You don't have that one? Okay. Oh, it might, it might be on eight and a half by 11. I printed it larger so I could see it better, sorry.
Any idea where it would be?
Okay, well, for example, well, you could take a look at the crosswalk. There should be a crosswalk included. It should be two pages, and it looks like this. Did you have a crosswalk in there?
Well, that's the one that, the one that I was asking what the DF, is that what you're looking at right there?
Yes, so DFA is the Department of Finance Administration, those are their fund numbers. So if you look at the crosswalk, you can see there are some that transfer across, it's just one single fund. But for example, fire protection, the DFA fund number is 20900. And our fund numbers go from 530 down to 557. So all of those individual funds are aggregated into one DFA fund. And that is the way their reports are. It makes it really difficult, even our auditors have complained about having to try and, you know, read some of these reports. The DFA has required all entities, all local governments, have to use this system. And it basically is to make it easier on DFA so that they can try and compare apples and apples by using, everyone using their chart of accounts. But what it requires then, it requires every entity to crosswalk their chart of accounts to the DFA chart of accounts. So it's, it's an extra step. Every time we have to submit something, we have to then crosswalk it. And all of these funds get aggregated into one. Another one you can look at is the Fund 299, other special revenue. That includes our community services, the Dog Canyon landfill, our health reserve fund, our emergency reserve, and a communication fund. So there are several of those where there, there's multiple of our funds aggregated into one of theirs. That's what, it makes their reports a little more difficult for us to decipher, because it's aggregated, it's got multiple funds of ours in there.
I can assure you that there's no way I can go through this in this little amount of time that we have here. So I guess I'm gonna have to take your word on it.
Well, you can take a look at the recap. Like I said, that's probably the most important piece that really shows our cash, even though it's just the DFA one. It's this two-page report.
I found it on 14, isn't it? Yeah.
So, so this is gonna show, and, and another thing that DFA requires us to do, they require us to split out cash and investments. But if you add those two numbers together at the very bottom of the, the bottom page there, the 20 million plus the 59 million, that's our, essentially our total cash across all funds. This is gonna show actual revenues that have come in throughout the entire year, because this is the fourth quarter. Transfers always zero out, because you're transferring from one fund into another fund, it just, it's a wash. And then, but you will see that the, the general fund alone transferred out $7 million to cover some of these other funds that needed, that needed funding. And then total expenditures across all of our funds, 156 million. That leaves a balance of $63,192,548. Oh, is this the, I'm probably looking at the, the budget one. I'm not looking at the recap for, I'm sorry. See, this is why this is confusing. That's the budget recap. Yeah, so that's why you're wondering, like, where are these numbers coming from, right? Okay. Sorry about that. That's the budget for next year. So the actual fourth quarter one, same thing.
What do they look like, what are we going?
Yeah, they, they look exactly the same. It's just that one on the top says FY '22 Q4. And the other one says FY '22 '23, final budget, basically.
I have no idea where that would be.
I know. Yeah, there's a recap on both of them. It's the exact same reports on both of them, it's just that for the, the financial reports for the end of the quarter.
It should be the second attachment.
Yep.
Well, that's what I'm in, and that's where I found the recap at. But I can't find another one that looks like that.
So this, this one was for just the budget, remember? I didn't do, I didn't do a separate individual county recap for the financial statements. That's the thing I said I'm gonna start doing for you in the future. So, yeah, I was, I was looking at the wrong recap, since they look both exactly alike. But it's, it's essentially the same thing. So cash and investments, if you add those two together, that's our beginning cash. That's from the, you know, very beginning of the year. Total revenue for fiscal year '22, 135,557,000. As I said, the transfers, they, they wash out to zero. Total expenditures were 127,240,000. And then you have adjustments. What these adjustments are, are certain, like accounts payable, accounts receivable.
Okay, hang on. We've gotta catch up with you, could we? This is, yeah. You may have to come over here and help us find something.
Okay.
The one I got that says 127 million is the recap one. And then this one is 136.
Yeah, because one of them, one of them says fourth quarter financials.
So you should have, the first half should be your resolution, right?
What, estimated schedule unrestricted cash final budget, is that what we're looking at? No?
So there's two, let me show you. Item, under item number one, and then the recap, the header on it is gonna say FY '22 Q4. These are the financial statements.
Okay.
So this is, this is.
So this is the recap right here?
Yes.
And that's 14?
Yes. And see, it looks exactly like, this is the actual budget. This will be your '22, '23 budget report. This just says recap, or report recap. And that's what makes it really confusing. This is the one I was looking at, and I should have been looking at this one, sorry. This is the one we're talking about now, this is item one, this is the fourth quarter.
That's, that one's 14.
So that's under 14, yeah.
Yep, that's the right one. That's the right one. It's actually very similar, in a lot of ways. We've been staying fairly, fairly flat with our budget over the last couple of years. So you can see even on the fourth quarter financials, the actual amount that the general funder, fund transferred out to other funds was about $7.3 million. So what we're budgeting for next year is just like a little over 7 million. So it's, it stays fairly consistent for the transfers out to some of these other departments. And then our total actual revenues, total actual revenues for all of fiscal year '22 is 135,557,000. Our total actual expenditures, 127,000. So that's, that's good, we had more revenue than we had expenditure, so that's a very good thing. And like I said, these adjustments, those are, some of them are auditor adjusting entries, some of them are where you have like a, an payable or receivable in a fund as of June 30th. It's sort of an accrual entry, even though technically counties, most local governments work on a cash basis. But for the purpose of financial reporting, you have to add some of those accruals in there. And so that is what is required. So that's what those adjustments are. And then that gives you the final cash balance, 79,247,672.83. The next column, there are two funds that require reserves.
The only one I got is on the balance.
That's on the bottom of the second page.
Okay, that's the balance, okay, I got it.
That's the ending cash balance. And so then the, the reserves are, for the general fund, we're required to hold three months of our actual expenses, budgeted expenses, in reserve. And actually, for this, for this purpose, because a financial, a financial report is based on actuals, so that's three months of our actual expenditures in fiscal year '22. We have to hold that in reserve, meaning we cannot spend that unless it's a dire emergency. And then if we do request to spend that reserve, we have to replenish it by June 30th. So it's, it's not really a very viable solution for additional funding. And then the other department that has a reserve is the road, County Road Department. And they're required only to have one month of their expenses. So that's what those two amounts are. And it reduces the final cash balance. But I mean, technically, yes, we still have almost $11 million. We're ending the year with almost $11 million in the general fund, and that's a good thing.
So our real budget is the 127?
Yes. Yep, that is correct. That is the real expenditure budget for fiscal year '22, the actuals.
And then we added this year on the adjusted balance, we added to that budget 75,000, 75, not 75 million?
On the?
On the adjusted budget, or adjusted balance?
The adjusted balance, yes. The 75 million, 755, yes. That takes into account those two funds that have the reserves. We have to reduce that from that final column, the adjusted balance. So that is going to be the, the balance, like the third column in from the end. That total amount minus those two reserves. So that gives us 75,755,000 that is available to spend, or that was avail, that is available to spend basically for the beginning of fiscal year '23 across all funds.
A little confusing, but I think I understand it.
We've got 79 million, but we have to hang on to the 30, 3 million, so we can only spend 75.
Go ahead.
So all in all, we're in pretty good shape, you think?
Yeah, it's, it's amazingly, you know, we haven't had too many hardships. I mean, the American Rescue Plan Fund, obviously that helped a lot with, with being able to give a little bit of relief to the general fund and some of the other funds by being able to use that money to pay for other infrastructure items and, and equipment items that we probably would not have been able to fund without it. So that has helped a lot. Our gross receipts tax was up last year. I'm expecting it's probably gonna come down a little bit this year, because the governor reduced the gross receipts, the state gross receipts tax rate by an eighth of a percent. That translates into approximately 1.5 million dollars. So I guess in the grand scheme of things, that's probably not that much money, but 1.5 million dollars you can do a lot with, so.
So for next year, on this budget, with all the spending that we did this year, of course, we had, that was the COVID money, we gonna be in good shape?
I think so. I mean, it might come down a little bit. The only other thing that I know we're expecting, some cannabis revenue. It's not gonna be as much as I originally had thought, because all the dispensaries that are located within Otero County are, for the most part, within the city limits of Alamo Gordo, or in, within the village or town limits of Tularosa and Cloudcroft. The only dispensary that's in the county area is in Chaparral, and there might be more than one down there, I'm not sure. So that would be the only place it would be receiving excise tax from. However, there will be some gross receipts tax. We'll see a bump in the gross receipts tax possibly from that. And we should get a portion of everything from Alamo Gordo, Tularosa, Cloudcroft, and the county area on that. But there's no way to know how much, because I, I spoke with the gentleman at Tax and Revenue who handles all of this for the counties, and he stated, because cannabis revenue is not federally recognized, there's no NAICS, NAICS code, it's national, I don't even know exactly what it stands for, but there's no federal code for that, a type of revenue. So what they're having to do is, is basically include it in with our retail trade category of revenue. So there's, there's really no way, we don't have a breakdown or a detail of which businesses are, or which types of businesses are, you know, which portion of that particular category of revenue, there's really no way to know. I think, I think you can request to have, to get a breakdown of that, but there's all sorts of confidentiality things you have to go through, and it's not something that you can just get that report monthly. You would have to request to see that for a certain period of time, and it would have to be approved by Tax and Revenue. And usually, you have to go there to Santa Fe and review the reports. They don't like to just send that to you individually, because there's a confidentiality matter.
My question to you, Juliana, and do not take this the wrong way, this is not I think so answer question. We, are we in good shape on this budget for the following '23? Or we, do we need to make adjustments and do something?
I think we're good for, for '23, definitely. And, and something that this commission has never really done, we've never really looked at like a, a three-year budget type thing. We could potentially start doing that. It just, it, it tends to confuse things sometimes, but it's, it is good to have some long-term planning. It's hard to say. I mean, it's, the way things are going with the economy, you know, nobody could, I guess you could sort of foresee some of it, but it sounds like it's going to get worse before it gets better. Hopefully, it will get better. And we'll, we may have to make adjustments as we go along. But for '23, we should be good. Next year, I, I, I don't know. It's, we're gonna have to kind of wait and see what, what happens.
Yeah, nobody can look into the crystal ball, but I just wanna, I wanna, a yes, no?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't like I think.
Right. I know, it's, I mean, there's recurring revenue, all the salary increases are obviously recurring revenue. But then again, you know, you have to maintain a certain amount of competition with some of the, you know, other local businesses and, in order for us to keep the employees that we have and recruit new employees as we need them to, to be able to provide the services that we need to provide to the community. So it's, it's sort of a, you know, you have to kind of balance that, like you said, with, okay, if we're gonna increase salaries, then we may have to make this truck last a little bit longer, you know, until we can afford that, or maybe look for more grant money. It's always possible to, to get more grant money, so.
We're working on that, huh?
Yep, we're working on that.
And I bet that NAICS code will probably become available for the marijuana if they federally legalize it. But then you'll get your code.
Right.
And that's probably, who knows? Okay.
So, one thing for in the future. This is two times now we haven't had these reports to look at. Let's just make sure that it, because it's, this is a deal that should have took days to look at.
Right.
Not an hour.
Right.
I'm not, let's just make sure, I understand you were gone, I understand that one. Things happen, but let's just make sure that, this is an important deal. The other stuff we could have went over, but this is, that's why I wanna make sure we're good on this.
Right.
Okay. Corey, you have any other questions?
No, sir, no, I'm, I'm good.
All right. I make a motion to approve resolution number 07-28-22/110-55, physical year 2021, 2022, final quarter financial report year ending June 30th, 2022. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion passes. All right, we don't have any more business, we will adjourn.
I, I'd just like to say that I'm, I apologize that I'm not physically present there today. I, I had to go to, I had to come to work today, and, you know, I have financial requirements as well. But if I'd have known there'd have been so much discussion on the jail, I, I would have been present there. But again, I just ask, I just apologize for not being there present today.
Okay, all right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.